All right, my name is Zach. Chair, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for December 7th, 2023. We'll hear the cases in the order they appear on our agenda. First matter of business, citizen comment. Citizen, we have one citizen comment. So you'll have three minutes to speak when you come forward. And when you have 30 seconds left, we will sound a bell. Thank you. And we will have Andy Hutchison.
Correct.
All right, you want to, your what, please come up? You got three minutes. And he's speaking of 3.1.4. Yeah, if you'll state your name and address, please.
I'm Andy Hutchison, 7704 Trenton Avenue. I'm about 200 feet away from where this this property that's up for question. When love organic that area of town, you know, basically we're at 82nd and Upland is where this property is roughly. When that area was annexed, there's a group of us that met with representing Papalote South and Papalote and Rancho Verde specifically. We sat down and met with the city staff, met with several of our city council members. And visited with them and basically when this was annexed, we did not contest it. Because we reached some agreements before it happened. And part of those agreements were is hey, we're not going to change anything. We're going to keep things as they are. And within reason. At this point in time, what we're looking at, the zoning case that y'all are dealing with right now is we've got a piece of property. Ownership hasn't changed. Intent and use of the property hasn't changed. The only thing that's going on is they've got a sign that got damaged by a hailstorm that they're trying to replace. Because it was damaged to the point that they couldn't fix it. It just needed to be fully replaced. That's all we've got. The whole purpose, as I see it, you know, I try to take a logical, you look at this. We look at rezonings and things like that is because you want to control what the use of the land is. And you want to be reasonable and you want to, you know, have some some good effect on 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 what that property is going to be used for. This is completely throwing the baby out with the bathwater in this particular case. There's nothing changing on this property. Ownership hasn't changed, use hasn't changed. They just want to replace and fix the sign that they had. If we open Pandora's box right now, we go through and take that property and rezone it. If that property later on does change ownership, the the, you know, the the horse is already out of the barn. Anything could be done to that property. The city loses the opportunity to weigh in have an opinion on what that zoning is going to be at that point in time. So really, just to put in a sign, I don't think this zoning change is is really appropriate at this point. I think the whole reason we go through this process, we have, you know, staff or whatever reason has decided that they want to, before they issue a sign permit. They want to have this zoning change and I just, y'all, y'all get my point. I just don't think it's necessary at this point in time, so I'm against the zoning change. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that'll conclude citizen comment. Next matter of business, when you approve the meeting minutes for November 6th, 2023. Want any motion?
Second.
Second Terry, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And we're gonna have no more plats. We're done with plats, so we can jump right into zone cases. Wow, that's amazing. Been a long time. All right, so we'll move on to 3.1.1 of the agenda. Zone case 1511. So weird to say that. I know. Yeah, this is great. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Cassie Bermea. This is zone case 15110. The applicant is Keshem LLC. Your request is for a zone from neighborhood commercial to auto urban commercial district. We sent out 16 notifications, have received zero in favor and one in opposition. This property is in District 3, located north of 50th Street and east of Salem Avenue. Here is a Mala notification map. You'll see two boundaries, one marking a 200-foot boundary and the other outlining a 400-foot boundary. These boundaries encompass all property owners who have received letters within the 400-feet area. Here is an aerial view of the subject property. The property is adjacent to single-family residences to the north, an auto repair business to the east, professional service businesses to the south, and a fast food restaurant to the west. The subject property is currently zoned neighborhood commercial district. Neighboring properties are zoned low-density, low-density, single-family district, auto urban commercial district to the east, and high-density residential district to the south, and neighborhood commercial district to the west. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses. The proposed zone change to AC is in conformance with this designation. Here are photos of the subject property and the surrounding area. The requested zone change request complies with the zoning ordinance, it's fitting for the proposed location. Additionally, this proposed change aligns with the surrounding area, maintaining the current development's character while being appropriate for the neighboring commercial uses. And the property is located north of 50th Street, designated as a principal arterial, and east of Salem Avenue designated as a local street. Arterials are continuous routes whose function is to serve high-volume needs of local regional traffic. Local streets typically provide access to smaller destination-oriented areas. Staff recommends approval of this request and we can take any questions at this time.
So regarding the specific use, are we even considering the specific use? That's not to be heard, is it not?
Correct. Even though it is advertised in that manner, there are certain prerequisite requirements within the Unified Development Code that a specific use for a smoke shop has to meet. It cannot be located within 600 feet of a church or a school. It cannot be located within 1,000 feet of another smoke shop, and this property is within 600 feet of a church. So since it does not meet that requirement, the applicant cannot request the specific use.
Okay. So before before we get into motions, that that needs to be read that way, that we're not, we're not taking into account AC with specific use for a smoke shop?
Right, the motion will be only for the AC.
Only the AC?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does that make sense?
There there's a slide in the, on our tablet that shows like a circle boundary. Is that, did that come on, did you show that one? Or is it just?
Originally, it was advertised as a specific use for a smoke shop. And that indicates where the churches are located.
Okay, 10-4.
It has since then been updated.
Okay, any other questions for staff as of now?
No, I do, I just have one question. How does, go back to two, because we've had this same property before that came back in with the issues with the U-Hauls? And that being denied, is the U-Hauls, it's my understanding that they're in violation currently because the city council denied all that?
Correct.
Does this change that to allow them to have the U-Hauls?
If the AC zoning is approved, they will be allowed the U-Hauls.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So go back to the existing zoning, please. So the existing, there is AC, which is the old C3 to the east. On lot lot 112 and lot 111, right?
Correct.
Okay. And what what is that current use right now? Does anyone know what that building is?
111.
112, 111, what what's going on there?
One's an auto repair shop, and I think the little first one's a little.
The taco.
Dos Hermanas or something, it's a little food food establishment. Used to be a smoke shop before that.
Okay. Okay.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the U-Haul, you saying nonconforming?
Well, it's been nonconforming because it came through us one time and we turned it down. Then it came back and the city council actually turned it down because of the parking requirements with it.
So, Mr. Chairman, it's actually illegal. It's never been legal, so it wouldn't be nonconforming.
And it wasn't approved by city council?
Right.
In planning and zoning?
No.
Right. And it's still being used that way?
Yes.
Okay. So if it goes to the AC, then it would be allowed?
Yes.
Okay. Teenage one. It's a good song by O'Reilly. All right, any other questions for staff at this time? No, okay, then we'll go ahead, thank you. We'll go ahead, we'll open the public hearing and is the applicant here or his or her representative? Yes, sir. If you'll please state your name and address, please.
Yes, this is Ramesh Krishnan, 4502 50th Street.
My name's Michael Mitchell, 4502 50th Street.
All right, I'm the owner of the property. Like y'all said, we did come back in March primarily for the CBD shop. It was primarily a CBD shop with, why don't you elaborate on what that is?
Well, it's a CBD shop versus vape shop, okay? We don't sell any tobacco in there at all, just e-cigarettes, tobacco-free e-cigarettes, CBD products and hemp-derived products. That's all we sell in there. We might sell t-shirts and stuff like that, a few pipes and stuff, that's about, that's it. And it's not a smoke shop.
So back in March, when we applied for the, from C2 to C2A, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved it. And city council, apparently I wasn't here, they disapproved, they thought that Monterey, which is on Indiana, they thought it was on Quaker, 50th and Quaker. And they'd said, no, it's too close to the school. We're 1.3 miles away from the school, so that was, that's why it was struck down and said like, no. So we reapplied because they said U-Haul, they wanted to start a U-Haul in there. And they said, hey, that needs a C4 zoning. So we came back and looked at three doors down, we had a C4, which is for the, you know, rezoning to C4. So that got turned down, saying like, no, you can't. You know, so we're, UDC code came in, now the church problem has come in, which should not have been there if we had been approved originally for the smoke shop at least, or not the smoke shop, the CBD shop. You know, right now, we are in a quandary because we didn't, we could have been grandfathered into this new code. But now this church issue is suddenly cropped up. So we're stuck, three units, I put in a lot of money to remodel that place, quarter of a million, one is empty, he's in one, the U-Haul is one, so both are gone. We're gonna have an empty lot sitting there for a while. That third unit has been empty for three months, so.
Then I've got a lot of money tied up in my own in that store too, probably 150, $60,000 myself. Things that I've done to it too, and it's just, I'm just gonna lose it all if y'all shut me down, so.
That's our case there, so.
So just clarifying, you are still running the U-Haul?
Yes, the U-Haul, the reason we still ran it was when we applied. When we talked to them, they said like, hey, when you reapplied, it's okay, you know, until you get denied again. So it was never not reapplied. And we were illegally using it. Since we reapplied, it was still in the meantime, you know? And then when the second time, when it got, the first time was for the shop, CBD shop, that got turned down and then only they started the U-Haul. So we applied for the U-Haul, and then when we got stuck down, they said the new code is coming October 1st, so apply for it. And that's exactly what we did, October 1st, we applied. So it's not like we wanted to put that in there illegally, hate to y'all cite us, we'll do that, that's not the purpose.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, question is though, we can't consider the specific use to have the smoke shop. The only thing we can look at is just to change it to AC, correct?
Right.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure because I'm getting a little.
And it, and that's legal across the board. That's legally, we can't, we're not.
That's right. So currently, the two uses that are happening at that property, the CBD, which is categorized as a smoke shop in the zoning code. And the U-Haul trailers rentals, both are illegal uses.
And even if we went to the AC.
AC would would legalize.
His would still be illegal.
AC would, right, and then would legalize the rentals of the U-Hauls.
So if I may ask a question, is the CBD shop itself is going to be illegal, not the, he's saying it's not a smoke shop categorization? So I'm confused, I don't know, I'm just asking a question, I'm confused.
I have an e-cigarette permit, I'm a cop pro.
No, it's based on our zoning code and the definition for a smoke shop.
Oh, e-cigarette is a smoke shop? Okay, I don't know, I'm just asking, okay.
Well, that's, that was kind of where I was trying to go.
Right, I didn't know, so I just wanted to make sure.
So what we're considering right now is the U-Haul situation, not the smoke shop situation.
So.
We're not, we're not even hearing that, we're not even gonna consider it tonight.
We can't.
We can't. It's, it's not a.
It's a non-negotiable, I guess.
Yeah.
So I mean, okay, well then, here's my question. I mean, I've been open since January to this year. And so what what I do?
Well, it's illegally open.
If it's not us.
Right, that would be city staff to enforce.
What?
That would be city staff to enforce.
We don't, we don't have anything to do with that.
I know, but but if one of you guys comes by, they're gonna write me a ticket. And if I'm open, so, I mean, and that's defeating the purpose to me, what I'm trying to do. So that's my question, am I open or closed? I guess I'm closed, according to all.
We don't determine that.
Well, I know, you're telling me I'm illegal.
Well, yes, that's true, that's, yeah. You are.
It it'll be up to code enforcement to enforce the zoning code. And if it's an illegal use, it'll be up to them how they approach it, if they, if they require you to cease that use.
Well, they've already come back. Yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's stay on course with AC at the moment. We're not going to consider the smoke shop or the specific use. So auto urban, all right, so we're back to the U-Haul situation. We've got, it was, it came to planning and zoning and it was denied? And then it went to city council that was denied?
That was in July when the C4 was requested.
C4.
But also, I don't think, I don't think it was Monterey, the school that they were concerned about, I think it was the.
Not for the AC, not for the AC, the school. The school was for the smoke, smoke shop.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah. When we requested C2A, which was for the smoke shop, we were approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I got a call. It was approved and then presented to the city council. And city council, I wasn't here, and they mistook school to be on the corner.
Okay, so.
On the corner of 50th and Quaker. It was on the corner of 50th and Indiana.
The tough part about the U-Haul situation is it was denied and then it was supposed to be removed from the property. They didn't remove it, they're still operating today, six months later. But if the case you're stating is because you were reaplying, and I'm assuming it had to do with the UDC?
UDC, exactly.
That's as to the smoke shop issue.
Not the smoke shop, but for this, UDC, they said, if you get approved for this U-Haul, then Smoke Shop will also automatically get approved, so apply for both together as well.
Who who is that?
But then the Planning Commission, they came up, PNZ came and said like, hey, you have a issue with the perimeter of 600 feet, that's what the UDC states.
But who's they, when you say they said it would be approved?
The office here, the city staff, they called us and let us know that you can, they they said you cannot be approved because of the church being within 600.
No, but I'm talking about when you said they said if you applied for it, it would be okay because of the new UDC, because of the uni, the new UDC code.
City council, when they left, they said, don't lose hope, you can still apply on the UDC code and there is a chance.
They didn't say it would be approved, they just said.
No, they didn't say it would be, you can still apply and hopefully get approved, is what they said.
So that's, that's the reason why you're still operating with the.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, so here we are, NC used to be C1, C2, and AC is now the old C3.
Right, right.
So here, you know, here we are.
No, I was just going back to the part just saying they said it would be approved, that's, they just said you could reaply.
Okay.
They said you have a chance.
And the point you made earlier was that's next, currently next to C3.
It's currently next to other AC, which is other C3, formerly C3.
Old C3, sorry.
We're gonna get used to the new terminology.
Okay. All right.
It was denied by us and city council at 31, correct?
Because the, the reason, because of the smoke shop. Was that not, that was, no, no.
No, I think I recall the city council.
First one was.
And maybe this is incorrect, but the city council, from what I remember, denied it because they had been using a use that was illegal. And they were offended that that had been taking place.
Got you.
And weren't going to just approve it after the fact, is what the discussion was, but you weren't, you weren't here.
Right, I was told it was the school confusion that they had, the first time I applied for the smoke shop.
Yeah, that's the smoke shop, we're talking about the U-Hauls.
Yeah.
Oh, U-Haul, we applied only one time. This UDC is the second time we're applying. We didn't apply the first time, U-Haul wasn't even existing.
The U-Hauls were.
Wasn't even existing, I can show you proof. It was applied only the second time we applied, was when we did that. And they said Smoke Shop will automatically, because it was C4, it's called C4. Like then, they said if they approved this auto, U-Haul, automatically the shop would get approved, so apply it again, that's how it happened.
Okay, but they denied your request?
The.
That the city council.
Planning and zoning commission approved city council.
Right.
Didn't approve, that's how it happened.
Okay. All right, I think I got it right. Any other questions for the applicant at this time? You good? Okay, thank you. We, so is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this zone case? Yes, ma'am? If you'll please come state your name and address.
Ida Blessen, 7206 78th Street. I just wanted to say, I went to Evans Junior High, which is now Evans Middle School. It's about a block east of Quaker, off of, on 58. So I don't know how close that is to the CBD shop and what we're discussing here. I didn't come for this case, but I had a comment.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? Not seeing any, is there anyone here to speak in favor? Not seeing any, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And. Motion for purposes.
For purposes of discussion, move to approve zone case 1511-0. Second. So yeah, to me, go back to my original comment, since there's, there's other AC right next to it. I I understand there's been a lot of confusion about where we started and how we got here. I'm looking at it just as today, like I'm just seeing the case today. I'm fine with it being, going to AC, just because it's next to other AC right there. If that was all NC down the road, probably not, but there is a AC right next door.
Okay.
I tend to agree, I mean, it's 50th Street, like AC is all up and down 50th.
Yeah, I, the thing that sticks in my mind though is how the, it's just operating when it wasn't approved. Just kind of level of disrespect to city council. Yeah, I I agree with what she said, Jordan, from a, from a zoning standpoint. In any other typical situation, yeah, I I don't have a problem with this. But the way that this specific property has gone down for the past, this is our third time, is just. It it just highly irritates me, that's all.
I'm with you too, and I want city council to know that.
And it just keeps coming back until, till they get what they want, we're just gonna keep doing it.
Yeah.
Keep changing it until we get what we want.
Okay, any other discussion?
My, my comments just say, yeah, you're, you're setting precedent to reward people for operating outside of, or what's illegal, illegal operation that ceased. And so just consider that.
Okay. And we'll do a show of hands on this, Scott, do you have anything to add? Renee?
I agree, it's a total disregard. They should have asked, I think, prior to, and that was not done.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, call the question.
Call the question, all right, show of hands, all in favor? All opposed?
So because there's not a majority vote, though, it's denied?
Sort of, okay. All right, so we're moving on to next zone case, 3.2.1. Zone case 2175B. Calvary Baptist Church, yes, ma'am?
Yes, that's right, this is zone case 2175B. The applicant is Calvary Baptist Church, requesting a zone change from high-density residential to neighborhood commercial. The subject property is located south of 82nd, west of Aberdeen Avenue. We sent out 139 letters, receiving two in favor and seven in opposition, within our new 400-foot boundary. This Mala map shows that within the 200-foot notification boundary, the, yes, the now four in opposition are worried about increased traffic and land value depreciation. Here is an aerial, aerial view of the property. The north and west are developed with duplexes. The south is developed with single-family and garden homes, and the east is developed with garden homes and large commercial retail development. The current zoning is high-density residential. The northern, western, and southern property is zoned medium-density residential. The east is zoned auto urban commercial and medium-density residential. The future land use mapped as a need says for commercial uses. Here are some photos of the property and its surroundings. The proposed zone change to neighborhood commercial would be in conformance with the 2040 comprehensive plan. The property is currently developed as a church, and the applicant does not intend to change the use of this property. The intent of this zone change is to allow for the commercial sign regulations to expand the signage available to them. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. Located south of 82nd and west of Aberdeen Avenue, the 2018 master thoroughfare planned as needs says a principal arterial and local street. The proposed zone change to neighborhood commercial would be in conformance with the commercial designation adjacent to a residential node. Staff recommends approval of this request, I can take any questions at this time.
So if I understand you correctly, we're, we're at, we're talking about going to HDR for sign it because they want to sign?
No, they're going from HDR to neighborhood commercial, which is just the lowest level of commercial.
That's separate.
Okay, how many churches are you gonna experience this with?
A couple, two tonight at least.
So this is, this is all eight going from A2 to C2? This is the old, the old way?
Yep. A2, yes.
A2 to C2. Force probably sign, the proponent will come up, but go ahead.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. All right, we'll go ahead, we'll open the public hearing, is the applicant here? Or his or her representative like to make any additional comments? So there's not, the applicant is not here? Okay, so is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this zone case? So by show of hands, may we see who all is here in opposition, just quickly? Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this zone case? That's present, show of hands, please? No? So, yes, you know what, you know where I'm going with this? What are you about to say? Do you, okay. Okay, so anyone here to speak in opposition, please come forward. If you like, state your name and address and your opposition.
My name's Marina Norby, I live at 522784th Street. I have a, a real problem with you changing this to a, even a neighborhood commercial in this area. This is going to invite in as what you designated as bars. The community garden, yeah, fine, storm shelter is wonderful. But you're gonna take this into areas where we're talking about microbreweries, it's possibility. Additional bars, like we don't have enough right there in that corner? Let's see here, what else? More drive-in facilities?
We, we're familiar, we know.
Okay, we don't need that additional around the church, it's not necessary. There's enough of it in that area, in that shopping center. That area was something that I looked at when I purchased that home because it was a neighborhood, not commercial. I wanted to get away from that. I wanted to get away from that. I fear that this is going to increase our taxes. It's gonna drop our, you know, it's gonna change the value of our property. And it's gonna increase traffic through there. Our crime rate's gonna go up. You've got convenience stores and bars, even if they are drive-through, you know, liquor stores. Then you're gonna have vagrancy, which again, is gonna increase our crime rate in that area. My neighbors and I are a bunch of little old ladies that really don't need to deal with that at this point in our life. And I would really appreciate you taking that into consideration when you look at this. Because this is gonna be also, there's gonna be an increase in traffic. And then when they start doing the traffic, they're gonna be doing construction, which is gonna, uh, mess up traffic through there. It's gonna be far, hard for us to get to our houses. It's just gonna be a pain. And I would really appreciate you taking a look at that hard and declining on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition at this time?
Uh, Kristen, can we, well.
Okay, well, not seeing any hands. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this zone case? All right, nobody's raising their hands, so we're gonna close the public hearing.
So, uh, Kristen, on, on, on what's going on here, we have two of these cases that are, are trying to change just for signage.
Yeah.
Uh, for churches. Can you explain exactly what's going on and why we may or may not even need to address zoning, maybe postpone something to see if there's another avenue? Can you explain it?
So I will say, you know, it, that's a good point. We have two very similar cases tonight. Um, when the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the UDC, y'all also made a recommendation that over the first two years, with this brand-new document, we do a check-in every six months.
Right.
What, you know, and this may be something you want to revisit. Um, what type of signage is allowed in an HDR district for commercial use such as a church? Because right now, under the Unified Development Code, this district does not allow an electronic message display. Um, and it's limited in the size and height of type of sign they can have. So they are looking for the commercial-type sign regulations that the NC district offers.
Okay.
So I would recommend it's something we revisit when you're, we, you do your first review in six months. Um, but that's, that's the reason.
So that makes. That, that makes difference too, because to me, going to knowing what they're, I guess you hate to say it, what's really their intent and when they're going. Because you look at who the applicant is and what they're doing, that, that's a lot more acceptable. Because I couldn't really see, I know they were talking about, I couldn't see a church going in and doing their property to put bars and all that stuff in it. That's.
Yeah, I, I just don't think we need to get into the practice of changing zoning just for something that could be fixed in, a simple, uh, five or six months now. Uh, we can put that on our list. I know Terry's got an ongoing list, so, um, surely these play, these, these two churches could probably wait five or six months. Is it, are we down to four months? Down to four months now?
Yeah.
Yeah, rather than jeopardizing the, the entire zoning in that whole area. I mean, I'd.
Open the whole can of worms.
I'd soon postpone and just wait.
I, I agree.
Rather than up for denial and then they have to, then it's a year, right?
Only if the P&amp;Z and council both denied the request.
I agree, I think.
Yeah, maybe if, if staff sees more of these specific cases, just say, just wait. Can you hang on three months, four months, just wait?
Is it, is it permissible for me to make a motion to postpone this? Do I have to do it to date certain, or?
Yeah, that's the.
So, um, that's a, I think that's a trick question.
Well, no, and I understand, and I'm asking it just to make sure.
No, I know. I'm not quite sure how to answer it. For a date certain, you would kind of have to know when the UDC would be amended, which we don't know for sure. Um, and then if it's just postponed indefinitely, that essentially ends the zone case and they have to reapply. Yep.
So probably the best way to most to, uh, postpone it indefinitely is probably the cleanest way then, right?
And the applicant's not here.
Yeah, and again, my personal deal, the applicant's not here.
And Steph, did we, I talked to the applicant earlier this week, so I don't know why they're not here, so.
Well, and also, if, if we, if we do make the amendment in the UDC, the change, then they won't even have to do anything. They won't have to come back at all, because it'll be allowed.
Right, good point, Tanner.
So we need a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to postpone, uh, Zone Case 217B indefinitely.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Do y'all understand what just happened?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay, just real quick, it, it wasn't denied and it wasn't approved. We basically said, we all, we agreed that for, for their purpose of trying to achieve digital signage, we don't need to go through the process of changing the zoning to neighborhood commercial. So what we have to do as a commission is take that information, go back to the drawing board and say, "We need a different avenue, different vehicle," in order for them to get their signage without addressing zoning. And I don't know what, we don't know what that looks like yet, but we, we postponed indefinitely, so they're gonna have to reapply. Um, it'll be at least four to six months out. We will get new notifications will be sent out.
And, and that's only if necessary. If, if council chooses to amend the sign code where they can get the type of sign they want with their current zoning, they won't need to rezone the property.
So you won't get notified because they won't ask to rezone the property.
But if they do ask to rezone, we will be notified.
Yeah.
Yes.
Same, same deal, if it, if it's resoned. The goal is to not have it rezoned.
Thank you.
So, we'll see. All right, thank y'all. Moving on, next one, 3.1.3. 3058G, yes, sir.
All right. Hello, Board. I'm Greg Hernandez, and this is Zone Case 3058G. The applicant is Seventeen Service LLC for Tommy Ford, requesting to rezone from low-density, single-family to auto-urban commercial district. The property is located south of 50th Street and east of Upland Avenue. Twelve notification letters were sent out and we received one back in favor. Here's a notification map showing the one in favor. Here's the aerial view of the property. To the northwest and south are vacant land, and to the east is a single-family resident. The current land use map shows this proper, uh, shows the property to the southeast and west zone low-density, single-family district, and the property to the north zoned auto-urban commercial district. The future land use map designates the northwest corner of this property for commercial land use and the remainder of the property for low-density residential land use. Here's a picture of the subject's property as well as views to the west, north, and south. The future land use map designates the northwest corner of this property for commercial land use and the remainder of the property for low resident, uh, low-density residential land use. The proposed zone change to AC would be in partial conformance with the future land use plan and the comprehensive plan principles. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. The property is located on the corner of two principal arterial streets. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area, will not end, will not change the character of the existing development. The subject's property is located on the corner of two principal arterial streets and would provide a buffer from those streets to future residential development in the area. Uh, the location is along 50th Street and Upland Avenue, which are designated as principal arterials by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. And staff recommends approval of this request, and I can take any questions at this time.
Welcome to the public hearing. Is there, is the applicant, or is her? Yes.
Tyler Gentry, 400576th Street, just here to answer any questions if needed.
Do, do you have a plan for it? Okay, that's.
No, sir, no plans. The owner just feels that there will not be a residential use for the corner of 50th and Upland.
Makes sense. Thanks.
All right, uh, we're going here to speak in opposition. Seeing any, is there anybody here to speak in favor?
All right, none seen. We'll close the public hearing.
Move, for purposes of discussion, move to approve Zone Case 3058-G.
Second. Second, Brandon.
This, this is identical to the, track to the northeast that we heard about a month or two ago.
And 50th and Upland is not a, that is not a residential, but I would consider.
No.
Prime for residential.
Yeah, not anymore.
It's pretty easy.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Last but not least, 3.1.4. Ashley.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Padilla. This is Zone Case 3492. The applicant is Hugo Reed and Associates Incorporated for Celebration Christian Center Incorporated. Requesting to rezone from SF2 to NC. We've sent out 43 notifications, receiving zero in favor and one in opposition. This property is located east of Upland Avenue and north of 82nd Street. Here's the notification map. The one in opposition has concerns for future development that could bring noise into the neighborhood. Here's an aerial view of the property. To the north is residential neighborhood. To the east is a residential neighborhood, along with a self-storage facility. To the south is a church and an electrical power plant, and to the west is a residential neighborhood. The current zoning is low-density, single-family. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial and residential low-density. Here are photos of the property and its surroundings. Here's an overhead view of the property. A graphic provided by the applicant showing the proposed rezoning location. The future land use map designates this area for commercial and residential low-density land uses. The proposed zone change to NC would be in conformance with the commercial designation and would conform to the principles of 2040 comprehensive plan. This request would be appropriate near the retail node and fronting onto an arterial, arterial street. The proposed zoning request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and is appropriate for this area. Is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The property is currently developed with a church. The proposed rezoning location will be along Upland Avenue. Upland Avenue is designated as a principal arterial. And staff recommends approval, and I can take any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I just want to go on the record as saying, if, when we get these cases going forward, until we get it fixed, I will continue to vote to postpone these. Just on the record, so council hears it.
I agree. If that's specifically what it's for, it's, if it's pertaining to signs, exactly, I agree.
We'll, we'll hear from the applicant. Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here, or his or her representative? Is this the same thing, Terry?
Yes and no.
Of course, of course. Of course. Yeah, you should have. Well, all right. Consider who the source was.
That's okay. I, I agree with you.
Uh, good evening, members of the planning commission. I'm Terry Holman with Hugo Reed and Associates, Ward 1601, Avenue N. Uh, I know I'm on the private side looking in, but I've been here a long time too, and I'll, I'll say, "Mr. Guana, welcome back." It's good to have a welcome, uh, familiar face on, on the dice. We protect your service. So, um, I'm gonna do my best not to get too terribly detailed, but there is gonna be quite a lot of in-the-weeds discussion on our particular case. Some good points have been made this evening about why are we zoning just for a sign? And well, can we wait till the UDC? And, and I think those are points well taken. Our situation, I, I'd like to point out what's, um, specific about our case, uh, and, and hopefully, I'm looking for a vote. So, the, I want to give you a little bit of background on this property. This is, uh, Celebration Christian Center. We are located at basically 80th and Upland Avenue. Uh, as Ashley pointed out, we're just north of the electric substation. And yes, the, the property backs into the old Papalote South residential development, as well as other commercial uses there. So she, she laid that out very well. The church itself was constructed around 1986, well prior to any annexation. And I think the point is well taken from Mr. Hutchinson about, you know, the, the, sort of the handshake deals of sorts, you know, that were done with the annexation with the Papalote Group. I know they, they had, they did a lot of work with the city at the time that annexation occurred. I'm gonna point out, if you address a couple of things that, that he said. Um, the, he had stated that we can do anything and the city won't have any control. You guys know that that's just simply not the case. When we're asking for NC zoning, we have a very strict guidelines of the things we can and things we cannot do. And by the way, this is not the city asking to change this, and so if someone wants to point the finger that the city is changing something in disagreement with their annexation, this is us asking to change, okay? And so that's, let's make that distinction. The church was constructed well prior to annexation. Uh, it's been operating as a church nonstop since all that time. And of course, development has occurred around this. Um, it was, came in as transitional zoning, and now with the UDC, it's now SF2 zoning. It's had a lot of interesting dialogue with Kristen about some of the nuances in vesting rights for this particular piece of property. Yes, we're zoning because we want to reconstruct basically that sign that's on that photo that I, that I sent out to you. So in, in some respects, this is almost a hardship case as much as anything else. What sets us apart from the other one you heard this evening is we are backing in to all of the residential. So we don't, we're not asking for a commercial zone that is across the street, across the residential street from residential. So strictly from a zoning standpoint, I, I think this is a good case. Um, it, it is neighborhood commercial. Um, you guys have heard this before, but the purpose of this district is to provide small-scale retail and moderate-density residential uses located away, away from major intersections with building and site design standards that are compatible and have adjacent residential uses. This is the least intense commercial district that we can get to allow us to construct the sign. If we don't get the zoning, much like the other case you heard tonight, we are limited to a 10-foot-tall freestanding sign. The, the one in the photograph there is about 20 feet today. All we want to do is basically put a new one up, and we have to get a permit for that. To get a permit, and we also have to get zoning, because we can't build anything taller than a 10-foot-tall sign in the residential district. So, the point well taken about, well, gosh, you're not changing the use, just wait six months and, and do the, you know, do the sign under, under hopefully some change in the code, right? We're all, we all think it's a good idea, but we are all asked to maybe gamble a little bit. I have a client who's already hired a sign contractor and has already submitted his permit to the ci, his permit app to the city, and that's when this issue came up. So to, to stall this project six months becomes a, a hardship on, on my client that I, I think can be avoided. So, the other things that I hope provide comfort to both you and to those folks who might be concerned. The, the UDC implemented some very stringent buffering requirements. Where you have, when you have NC zoning, which is next to residential, um, we've got to put a lot of landscaping in, and you all recall all of those teeth-nashing discussions we had, right? About, about a year ago. So this is a case, even though I, I objected to the, the onerous nature of that landscaping, this is the thing that we can say provides comfort for, for those residences. Because today, that landscaping doesn't have to go in, because we're not doing anything on the site that warrants the need for landscaping. We're just putting up a sign. But moving forward, should the church decide to do a major expansion, or if they decide to do some sort of commercial development on the property, the UDC protects the abutting neighboring residential area with the buffering requirements, however they may be, okay? So I want you to step back and, and think about the, the times when we've placed commercial zoning next to residential. And this is an, this is an instance where I think we, we check all the boxes. We're, we're commercial. It is the least intense commercial, right? And, and no, we're not intending to actually build any commercial, but from strictly a zoning standpoint, I, I think it's a good case. And I hope you look at it also from that objective. Um, we, were it not for the sign, we wouldn't be here. No, no question about it. But it's a strange sort of quagmire that we're in from a code standpoint. For us to do what we need to do, we've got to get the zoning and we've got to get the property platted. And so I'm, I'm hoping for your consideration in that regard. We're, we're very similar, but also very different. We're very similar, but also very different to the other one that you heard this evening. It's just a different setting. It's a different setting for a commercial piece of property. I hope I've addressed that as best as I could. I also have the pastor, Dr. David Lance here. I'll ask him to add to or answer any questions if he feels like I missed anything. But I would appreciate your consideration, we'd like to move forward.
So Terry, just to clarify, on the NC, if it's granted, you guys go pull the permit, that's not gonna trigger any buffer yard triggers either?
The signed permit itself would not trigger the buffer yard.
They're not connected.
But, and Kristen, you help make sure I don't misspeak here, please. If you do an interior remodel, let's say we add a bathroom on the inside, or whatever it is, that does not trigger landscaping. But if we add to the building on the outside and meet certain percentage requirements, those types of things, that's what then triggers that. So, careful what you wish for, right? We're asking for NC zoning, and we realize that should we decide to do something more expansive in the future, guess what we get to do? We get to build a buffer yard, and we're aware of that.
So y'all want the NC now because you want to get the sign done now, and you don't want to wait three months or four months?
That's, yes.
You want to do it now?
Yes.
But if you add on, it might trigger a bunch of buffer yard.
That is, that is, that's the position that we're in, yes, sir.
Okay, but if you add on now, let's say you don't do the zoning, you add on now, you're basically an R1.
Correct.
It wouldn't trigger it, right?
Correct. We've discussed that.
Okay.
Yes.
Just making sure.
And you, Mr. Wheatley, you're certainly welcome to reemphasize that point to the pastor while he's here as well, because we've had that sort of strategic discussion, you know, what really makes no sense. He's got a sign contractor that's, he's got money tied up. And I think it's, it's to their benefit to get forward as possible, as quickly as possible.
Well, and I do think.
So if he pulls a, if he adds on without this, an R1, it would not trigger a buffer yard?
Precisely.
And what would that buffer yard potentially look like?
This would be a type B buffer yard, as the code is currently written. Minimum 10 feet width if you're doing, if you have a fence. Per every 100 feet, two canopy trees, four, I'm sorry, four ornamental trees, and a whole basket full of shrubbery. I mean, it's a crazy number.
So just if he decides to add on an extra little building, it could potentially, you're gonna have to add a bunch of trees and bushes and fence?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Not to mention, at that point in time, that probably will trigger drainage analysis. There's a lot of things that, yeah, that do come into play, that are non-zoning issues.
So if you get the NC now, you're almost saying, I'm not gonna ever add on?
Yeah. Not unless it's worth it.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, that's just what it comes down to.
It hinders your ability to do it later. It's almost, it's not a bad, it's almost like a negotiation with, it's kind of what you can do now with it as it's currently zoned versus if you go to NC, but it is being spurred by the signage. But if they were to ever do anything in the future, it's financially not a good thing for a church. It isn't.
It's onerous.
Yeah. And it protects the rest of the neighborhood. It protects across the street.
It would.
I mean, it's a, that, that, you could see that as a benefit, potentially.
Yes, and, you know, truth be told, if something is done with the church later on, at least we've got the zoning in place, and we know the rules of the game at that point in time.
You know, I go and I understand where they're at and what it's going, but I still kind of go back with Tanner, because what would have been the difference if we would have gone to the one before that we postponed and let them do NC? Then they would be under the same, same, same rules and regulations about what it was going to. And so, I empathize and understand because you're here to talk about it, but to me, they're still almost hand-in-hand, and to do, if we do this one here and we do that one there, then how many others would open up? And are we gonna be inconsistent until we get settled? Or, you know, it's kind of like a flip, and how do you determine?
Sure, well, just looking at this site plan, when I look at the southern border, it butts up against a transfer station.
Right.
And I don't know if that's commercial to the south, not the southeast piece of it, but it looks like it. You've got a storage unit on, it's a different piece of property compared to what we looked at earlier, to me, in three different ways. But you bring up.
I know, and I understand, because I'm like I'm saying, because this is totally, the location of the other place. I could see more problems with commercial if it went in there than in this one.
Right.
But then I still have the problem trying to say, well, yours is okay, yours is not, and.
Yeah. So we're here.
You know, I think after discussing all this, if the owner knows what he's getting into, and he still wants the vote, and he still wants the NC, then we have to hear that and do a vote. And I mean, we're not here to tell a guy what he can and can't do, but if he knows what he's getting into, then, okay.
I would encourage him, Mr. Dr. Lance, if you want to speak to that, I think it'd be good. I'm just a hard help.
Yeah.
I'm not the guy writing the checks.
Well, and we appreciate it.
Yes. I'll do my best to try to do whatever I need to do to clarify. On June the 5th, we had a hailstorm. It knocked out the center panel of our sign. And it took a while to get the insurance stuff done. So we went and you started a new regulation on October 1st. We came in the day before, because they said we had to do it the day before, to get the permit, okay? So we came in, did that, then we got a call, put our money down, about 17,000 with the sign company. Got a call back and said, they won't permit it because we're not platted and we're not zoned properly. So I came down here and they said, this is what we need to do. We need to get it replatted and rezoned. I guess we got, we were, as that property, as you see, it's on there, was all given to the church for church use. It's a church-use piece of property. And I've been there 30 years, basically. I came in '94, well, maybe one year less. And we plan to be a church, we're gonna be a church, all that kind of stuff. And then the letters went out, and the people around us got phobic about the residential, I mean, the commercial aspect of all that other stuff that you put in there. I wish we would just be a church, you know, and not have all the other stuff, because as a 501(c)(3) through the IRS and the federal law, we should be protected. In my opinion, I looked at federal law also, we are protected to do what we need to do, regardless what state or city or anybody else says. They may go beyond your legal capacity of thinking about that. But we are protected in there, but what now I see, we're sort of in this catch-22. If we, the land that you see on that plat that's to the north, we sold that property so Papalodee could have that housing area. Now we've got an alley with a bunch of dumpsters, and they're fine people, but I don't like seeing dumpsters. I'd like to put a fence in there sometime, and maybe greenery in front of it. Some of it doesn't make any difference because it's commercial to the other side, and some of it, like the folks that have the utility company, they put some trees in there, you see them in there. We, only thing, the reason here, we want a sign fixed, and it looks like, okay, it's yuck. The center is out, it's rusted, it's in bad shape. And so the reason I'm standing here in front of you is to try to get some sort of disposition. We've already put money in on it, they won't continue to build it or do anything with it until we get disposition for the permit. And so we've got money tied up, and we're waiting for disposition with the city, so we can do the right thing to get some decent signage out there. It looks good, and we're not trying to threaten anybody else with putting in bars or anything else. That's against the law anyway, if you know the law. And we just want to do the right thing. So we just come before you, and of course, you guys know more than I know, because you're on the zoning side of it. I'm not. You have more knowledge than I have, and you brought up something there. We don't need to spend much money on concrete and trees down the road to make a buffer zone that's not needed. So it's a catch-22, in my opinion, on that one. We're just trying to get a sign.
Yeah, we get that, but you know, like the first case, here we are, at this case, we're hearing these parameters of what happened, however we got here, we got here. But we just want to make sure that you know what you're getting into. If we give you NC, and you decide to add 200-square-foot bathroom on, it's gonna trigger a bunch of other things 15 years from now, even maybe when you're not even the pastor.
Okay, is there any other op, can, if you get, if you put it as NC, can you revoke the NC later?
Well, that's what we were talking about on the first, because when we came through and came with this new UDC, we knew it wasn't gonna be perfect. There were gonna be items that we would have to address to correct. And that's what we're there talking about, having a meeting every six months for the two years. And that's what we did on the first one, just saying, we're not gonna say, we're not gonna let you do it, or you're gonna do it. We're just saying, if you can give us a few months to come in to look at it.
I can sit on a dead sign for a few months if we get a concrete decision that's good.
But that's what, that's what we're looking for, is a way to, so, you know, where they can maybe put in.
I think it, because it's a newbie on the.
If it meets this, you can do it, because.
I think because it's a newbie on the block, there's still a lot of questions about what was passed or what it is inside that.
I just don't want you to not grow, because you have to do buffer yards.
Right, this could hamstring you for the future.
Right.
Going in C.
Okay.
If, if it's a better option, if you can, and to Kelly's point that she made earlier, we don't know, we don't know when it's gonna be finalized. We make, and we also, we make a recommendation to city council.
Right.
They have the final vote on everything.
Yeah. In fact, requested you guys expedite something if we have to sit on this thing?
Our next meeting is, is it set? Do we have a set date for?
The first Thursday in January is our next meeting.
No, well.
Our next regular, for the, to review the unified development.
Yeah.
It is not set, you just recommended six months from when it went into effect on October 1st.
And we hit six months in April.
So probably April, yeah.
April 1st, to go, to go into effect, May 1st?
So in April, we will, this group will get together, we'll go through what changes, problems we see.
Okay.
Recommend changes, and it goes to city council for two readings after we meet, so that goes in May?
It would have, for this kind of a change, because it's a change in the zoning regulation, it would have to go through the.
Public hearing.
Joint public hearing again.
To be fair to everybody in the room.
Yeah.
I think April is ambitious. I honestly, I think you're looking at summer, by the time we get through what Kelly just described.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, to be fair.
No, and it's true, and it's one that obviously, this is one, this has come up twice right at the very first, so obviously you know it's gonna be something that comes up. But again, like they say, I empathize with him, but then if we're putting this on him, then you kind of go, oh, three years from now, oh, we want to do this, now, oh, instead of costing this much to this, we've got to add all this other stuff.
Mr. Bell, I've been really reading through and now getting into situations where we are applying the code that we all work diligently on, and just finding things left and right. That, gosh, we should have done this this way or that that way. So your points are well taken about sitting back and waiting. I think if you vote tonight, that's great. If Dr. Lance and I decide between now and council that maybe that wasn't the right thing for us to ask you to do, then we at least can withdraw it by the time we get to council. So, you know, we're forever kicking cans down the road, right? But that, that keeps from shutting the door on us at this point. You know, we still have an out, Mr. Wheatley, to your point. If we decide, okay, maybe that wasn't the thing we wanted to do from a business standpoint, then at least we've, we've got a ball that we can then pull out of the game, rather than have to try to get back in the game, as it were.
And Terry, just as a point of clarification, it has to be withdrawn before it's posted on the agenda for council. Otherwise, it's up to councils.
Thank you, and I'll ask for that date when we have that. One question. Since, okay, this is sort of strange. Since we applied for a permit prior to the change of the new October 1st regulations, is there any way that we can get, like in the military, where I came from, an exception to policy just to cover the sign? So we can move forward with the sign being repaired and replaced?
So the issue here is, under your original zoning, the sign that you're allowed to have is a maximum of 50 square feet.
Okay, we were also grandfathered in, and during that time, the first gentleman came, I was at that meeting, and they said there would not be any change to our sign about what the size we could have and the height and everything else. As we were promised by the folks that appeared, from the zoning and planning people at Celebration Christian Center, when they came. We had already promised that, and this is probably before you ever were there, but that's what we were promised when they had the meeting, to us, that we would not be.
Oh, when you were annexed?
When we were annexed.
Yeah, so you're allowed lawfully to keep the same use?
Uh-huh. We just need to clean it up. I mean, I don't want to get into bad things with the city, because we've already got a contractor to do the sign. We just need to be able to get it permitted, so we can fix what's there.
So based on the regulations that apply to that property, even when you were in the county, before annexation, you're limited, because the city regulates signs in what's called the ETJ, the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Your sign has always been required to be in the ETJ and in the city, a maximum of 50 square feet.
It must be, because we went through a sign company and they went through to get it permitted.
So that's, that's what's happening now, is because you're enlarging the sign, you have to seek regulation?
It's actually not any bigger, it's just electronic.
Okay. Sorry, that's freaking me out. I pulled up a copy of the sign permit, it looks like your existing sign was oversized to begin with. The new proposed sign is 81 and a half square feet over that 50-square-foot allowance. So I don't know why you were allowed to have the larger sign to begin with, you shouldn't have been.
Don't ask me, I just.
Yeah, no, I don't know either.
And that's what I keep running into, we get changes of personnel and changes of opinion. So, anyway.
What I'm hearing is they want to go ahead and have the vote with the opportunity to pull it before the date.
Yeah.
So, okay.
I've got a question. Terry, is this the condition of signs in right now? Just curious.
That was a cheat a lot, and that was a Google photo from Street View, and so that looks to me, looked like it was last spring, based on what you, based on the trees.
My other comments are just that about 12 and a half minutes, we set precedence for a case. I know that we've made arguments that are what makes this different than the previous case. This church sets off an arterial, just like the previous one. The previous church was across a residential road from residential homes. This one backs into residential homes. It's maybe very similar. I just don't feel right changing what we just said. If we would have allowed the first group, A, they didn't show up, so I'm probably with that, but if they had showed up and made the same argument, then we should have allowed them to maybe convince us to have a vote. I think we've just set precedence.
I agree.
It's the importance of showing up.
I don't, I don't know that in a couple of months, in April, we're gonna, we are gonna recommend, or the city council would recommend, sign ordinance to change in single-family. So if they don't change their, if they don't change their zoning now, waiting a couple of months, I'm not sure that they're gonna change the zoning to allow that kind of sign.
That's a good point.
You know, in April. I mean, to compare it to the previous one, high-density residential, you know, would allow for signs. But single-family residential, not, not a sign-friendly zoning, and I don't know that that would ever change.
Yeah.
So.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that is.
May I address that? I think, to your point, at least there's an opportunity to think about signage in zoning districts. And, you know, I would hope that at least the thought process would be open to say, okay, well, if you have, if you have a church in a residentially-zoned district, but it's located on a thoroughfare, that's not the same as a church being on, you know, in inside a neighborhood. And so, to your point, none of us can predict the future, right? But I think technical arguments can be made for a change, but we don't know until you guys actually discuss it. And so, I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but I think, I'm just saying that there might possibly be an opportunity for a change to address this issue, because we're gonna find this quite often, I think.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Sir, could you state your name and address real quick?
Yes, Dr. David Lance, Church is 8001 Upland Avenue, here in Lubbock, Texas, 79424. Dr. David Lance, Church is 8001 Upland Avenue here in Lovoc, Texas, 79424.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
We may have more questions for you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this zone case? Yes, ma'am. Y'all are welcome to step up to the podium and speak in opposition if you like.
My name is Becky Druckenberg and I live at 721178. I realize I'm against professionals up here and, uh, I don't know how wide an alley is, but I'm the house right there that I throw my zucchini and stuff out the back gate onto their property that's not worth taking into the house. Um, it, and there's an L and that lane sits right in the middle of houses. And so, um, my problem is not with the church getting a new sign. I think they should be able to do that. I hope common sense prevails and y'all can figure out a way for that to happen. My problem is if they decide to fold or something were to happen to that church, then who's going to come in and buy that commercial property and put some businesses in there that we don't want?
Thank you. Was there somebody else that wanted to speak in opposition?
Ida Blessen, 720678th Street. Uh, when I received the letter, I contacted Pastor Lance and he informed me that he was just trying to get a sign after the, the storm in June. And he said that because of what happened trying to get that sign, that he had to hire Hugo Reed and, uh, he said at great expense of $10,000. And I, I hate that for, I hate the thought of that, a church in this city to replace a sign, and we don't care in our subdivision, we, we've all talked on our private Facebook group, we'd love for them to have the biggest sign they want. They do face Upland, their building is set way back and there is a lot of land that would be a perfect commercial if somebody were to buy them out. I don't know how big your constituent is, constituency is at the church, but, um, if this church decreases any, and I don't know, how big is your church? Can I ask that question? Your, your membership? 75 people supporting a big building and a big lot. And, you know, things change. Mega churches are coming in and a lot of people are quit going to church, unfortunately. So the neighborhood is worried about the NC because we'd rather address it when they were going to, if they decided to sell the building down the road and maybe even when you and I are gone. Who knows? So we're concerned about that and, uh, we, uh, what Andy Hutchinson said, I agree with 100%. Um, we don't care how big their, their, their sign is and we wish the city would consider, reconsider for churches. And they do face Upland. There are houses directly across the street on 80th Street and 81st. Um, let's see, no, it'd be the other way. Uh, 79th, right across and 80th Street, right across from, before the commercial starts on the corner of Upland and, um, 82nd. So they do face people, but they're way, set way back. They're wonderful neighbors. They keep their yard mowed, it looks nice. Their sign is still up, it still looks good from the street as far as I can tell. I know it's got problems and I know it got hit. We all got our roofs hit. We had baseball sized hail. So we just want to plead to you to go ahead and see if you can help churches out. I hate it that they spent $10,000 with 75 members of their church. That just makes me sick. So please consider expediating, expediting this as much as you can to not change it to NC and to give him his sign. They deserve a sign. They need a sign. So we're happy for them. We, we love them there. We want them to stay there. We don't want it to turn commercial. 82nd and Upland is so busy, at 5 o'clock, we can't get up, out of our alley between 78th and 77th Street to get onto Upland at, at rush hour, morning, noon and evening. So help us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition?
Gary Samuels, 720978th Street. I live directly across the alley from the church. Uh, I built my home about 20 years ago. The church has been a fantastic neighbor and it grieves me to have to say that I'm opposed to the change of the zoning on it. I asked him directly, uh, you've been there 20 years, you making any plans to move? He said, no. And as a, I believe him, but I don't think it would be wise to say, yeah, go ahead and turn that into commercial, because there's no telling what could happen to it at that point. I urge you to please do something about this sign situation. You say that it's in the works? This is common sense. 20 years or 30 years actually, and he can't get a sign fixed? There's something wrong with that. So please take care of that. Let us have our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? Okay, not seeing any. Is there anybody here to speak in favor? Okay, then we will close the public hearing.
I stand by my earlier statement. I mean, Terry, you did a great job representing your client. Um, I agree with what Brandon said, that we, you know, setting a precedence for this.
Get a motion.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
I'll do it. I'd like to make a motion to postpone zone case 3492 indefinitely.
Second.
Second, Brandon.
So I just, I think that, um, we've got to fix this, like y'all are saying, like we, we've got to fix this. It's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not.
And I, I, it does stink that you have to wait, you know, till potentially summer to get it done, but I'm glad that Eric and Robbie are here too, to hear this, because they can be a sounding board for us to city council, but we need to get this fixed. And so for me, I, I stand by my earlier statement.
I, I agree because I empathize with them and obviously the neighborhood empathizes with them, as we can tell by what they've said about it, being good neighbors and stuff. And I hate it that it goes to money, but I still go into the consistency on it, because I think we're, we'll just muddy the waters even more. And I think this is putting more of an urgency to us and the city council to understand this is something that's got to be addressed. It's not a, oh, maybe it's come up first time, first meeting and we have two of them. So.
I agree. Just want to add that I do, I empathize with you pastor. I don't know if you remember me, I, I went to your church as a, as a kid, Eldon Avenue